This meeting is not called order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Switche.
Here.
Mr. McErvin.
Here.
Ms. Perez. Mr. Bravoni.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the absent. Councilmember be excused.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Bravoni, that Councilmember Perez be excused. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to a special proclamation from our favorite, I guess for our favorite market.
Proclamation, Farmers Market Week, whereas Washington's farmers make an essential contribution to our local communities and to the well-being of our citizens, and whereas the Renton Farmers Market at the Piazza is celebrating its 15th year of operation, open each Tuesday until September 27th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Renton's beautiful downtown Piazza Park, and whereas the Farmers Market Program in Renton is dedicated to supporting Washington's family farms and to providing opportunities for the citizens of Renton and its surrounding communities to meet local producers and gain access to the bounty of Washington-grown products and all their diversity, fresh from the family farm, and whereas the Farmers Markets at the Piazza benefit local businesses and contribute to economic vitality by attracting thousands of potential patrons each week, and whereas the Farmers Market benefits those in need by providing donations to the local food bank, and whereas the congenial atmosphere of the Farmers Markets in Renton appeals to citizens of all ages and ethnic backgrounds, create a positive social experience and provide nutritional and economic benefits. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of August 7th through 13th, 2016, to be Farmers Market Week in the City of Renton, and I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the many benefits of our local Farmers Market. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 8th day of August 2016. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that council concur in the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with this proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Our pleasure to present this to Kerry and volunteers for the market that really make every week go by really well.
Thank you. We hope to see you all there tomorrow.
I want to say thank you to you on behalf of Piazza Renton, the volunteers that are faithfully at the market every day, every month, all year long, and have been from the very beginning.
For years, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate that. And I know Kerry appreciates it very much, so thank you very much for being here tonight. Kerry, that was a short speech. Okay, moving on to administrative report. Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, a couple of things for the public's information as well. Today, beginning today and for a couple of weeks, our Renton Community Center will be closed for its annual maintenance. So if folks need to make reservations or do some other business, our phone, they can still call us and the phones are, somebody's there to answer the phones between 8:00 and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and then we'll open up again on the 19th. We're hosting the first Renton Multicultural Festival, September 30th through October 1st. The festival will celebrate the city's diversity through dance, entertainment, food booths, and other exciting activities, and we'll be providing you with more information in the coming weeks, but want people to just get that on their calendar now. Should be a great, great event. And wanted to just share with the community, our own police department became the first department in the state to use drones to investigate major crime scenes. This use of photogrammetry software produces images several times more detailed than handheld methods, saves countless man-hours, and reopens areas under investigation much more quickly. We're excited to have that happen, and we'll be providing a demonstration for the council in the coming weeks. The Cedar River, as people, if they've been down walking, you'll know that we've been moving a lot of gravel out of that river. Over 120,000 cubic yards are going to be removed from the river, and it's, we're expected to have that wrapped up by the end of this month. So we appreciate the good work that Merinos has been doing there. And finally, information on our preventing street maintenance and other street repairs continues to be made available on our website. People can go to the city's website at rentonwa.gov and backslash traffic impacts, and you'll be able to get a detailed list of all the work we're doing and where you need to use caution in your driving, as you'll see barricades, in some cases, flaggers up there. So we just want to encourage everybody to drive carefully and through those construction zones. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Next is audience comments. We have several people that have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. There's a timer with lights on it next to the city clerk. First is Neil Sheasley. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
All right, good evening and thank you. I am Neil Sheasley. I live in North Renton, and I am also the president of the North Renton Neighborhood Association. Last Monday, my wife and I were here at the meeting on a different matter, but at that meeting, the fire department gave their report on the 4th of July, and that report left us shocked and outraged. The whole neighborhood is upset, the whole city is upset of what transpired on the 4th of July. It was apparent that the city was left to run wild, and that's not acceptable at all. We were terrorized as a neighborhood by a handful of individuals who should have been arrested, some should have gone to jail. It was a very, very dangerous situation. There was gunfire, people shooting off guns in the air, and nothing was done about it. Up here, I'm also representing residents outside of North Renton, plus business owners that we have gone and talked with so far. We're going to talk with more, and we are requesting a town hall meeting in the near future to address safety and security in the city, because it's out of hand, and it's time to do something, and we are requesting a town hall with you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight. Okay, thank you. Next is Jesse Robbins.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jesse Robbins. Last name is R-O-B-B-I-N-S. I'm a resident of Seattle, a frequent visitor of Renton, and a concerned citizen, very interested in vehicle noise pollution. I want to extend my thanks to the Renton City Council and to the mayor for allowing me to speak today. The best way to frame my comments is with the who, what, when, where, how, and why. What I'd first like to bring up for your consideration now and individual conversation later is indeed vehicle noise pollution. Vehicle noise pollution directly pertains to Renton Municipal Code 8-7-3, Public Disturbance from Noise, specifically Section C, which includes noise from, quote, "the creation of frequent, repetitive, or continuous sounds in connection with the starting, operation, repair, rebuilding, or testing of any motor vehicle, motorcycle, off-highway vehicle, or internal combustion engine within a rural or residential district so as to unreasonably disturb or interfere with the peace, comfort, and repose of owners or possessions, or possessors of real property." To think about this in another way, think about your motorcycles or cars with aftermarket aggressive mufflers. Now, I use that phrase aftermarket mufflers specifically because, to be clear, I'm not anti-motorcycle, nor am I anti-fancy car. Now, when does this problem occur? As I understand it, noise pollution happens all throughout the day, with specific annoyance during the evening. So for context, imagine that you are a new parent, you have a child, and you just put that child asleep, and you yourself are settling in after a hard day's work, only to be jolted awake because some car or motorcycle cruises down your road with an extremely loud muffler at 11:00 at night, rattling your windows and setting off car alarms. Now, why is this important? According to the report, one of many from the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health, published last year, December 29th, in 2015, entitled "Annoyance from Road Traffic, Trains, Airplanes, and from Total Environmental Noise Levels." Quote, "Annoyance is the most prevalent health effect in a population exposed to environmental noise. It can result from noise disrupting people during daily activities, sleep, or rest, and may cause a variety of negative responses such as anger, distraction, depression, anxiety, exhaustion, and stress-related symptoms." Noise annoyance has further been shown to be associated with reduced quality of life and well-being. Traffic noise is one of the main sources of annoyance. Several studies have shown positive exposure response relationships between annoyance and increasing environmental noise levels induced by road traffic, trains, and airplane movements. Now, where does this occur? Based on the conversations I've recently had with Commander Dave Liebman of the Renton Police Department and members of the Huntington Heights Condo Association, I understand that vehicle noise pollution is prevalent, but not exclusively on Petrovitsky and 116th Avenue Southeast. Who I've been talking to? Well, I've been talking to neighborhood associations, neighborhood liaisons, police departments, city attorneys, city councils, and mayors. I've most recently had the opportunity to speak one-on-one with the mayor of Linwood, and next week I'll be addressing the council president of Seattle, as well as another council member in Kent. My goal is to get a better understanding of how cities across the Puget Sound experience and suffer with vehicle noise pollution. How does this problem still exist? Well, based on the conversations I've had, what I've learned so far is that it relates to some of the following issues. What outdated noise codes, which are sometimes both subjective and difficult for police to enforce due to needing to be present at the time the infraction occurs. Some police departments lack the human, financial, and technological resources to make the enforcement a higher priority. There's also fear among local governments that cities are becoming perhaps too restrictive, borderline nanny state. Current resources also make it hard to track something as fleeting as a moving vehicle, and of course, last but not least, aggressive mufflers in and of themselves are still very legal to purchase. Now, why am I here? I'm here to bring this issue to your attention, and ideally to get in touch with the council members and committees, any interested stakeholders in city government, to share their insights with me on this problem and explore mutually beneficial ways to abate noise pollution and improve overall city livability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Robbins, if you need assistance in terms of notification, emails, or whatever, just let us know, and we'll help you with that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Kristi Hartman.
Hello, thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Kristi Hartman. My husband and I have lived in downtown North Renton and a couple of spots on Park Avenue and over on Wells and the 200 block for 13 years now, I think. We really love it here, obviously. We hope to open a business in the next few years here. We watch with interest the things going on in the neighborhood, and we try to be active in our community. One of the things that I really like about the downtown North Renton is our involved neighbors in lots of ways. They really are always watching what's going on. And one of the things that has come to my attention recently is an issue with the animal control officers in the City of Renton and the police department's solution around dwindling relationship between the Seattle Humane Society and the City of Renton's police department and how they handle strays and other animal-related issues through our animal control. For those who aren't aware, just in a nutshell, for many, many years, a very long relationship has been had between the Seattle Humane Society and the City of Renton, sometimes under contract, sometimes not so much. In recent years, not so much, and in that timeframe, the Seattle Humane Society has generally handled most of the animals that come into the custody of the animal control officers. After a period of time has occurred, they turn the animals over, and Seattle Humane Society takes over from that point to ensure that the animal is adopted out and all of the things that animal shelters do. The reason for my coming today is that it became clear to the neighborhood that things were kind of going downhill with animal control, not with the officers themselves. I'd like to maintain that. We're all very, very on the same, on the same team in terms of compassionate animal control officers who are knowledgeable and involved in the community, and they obviously have a lot to handle in a large territory. They do a great job. We've had personal experience with them in our family, and I've always been very pleasantly surprised at how well they do their jobs. But it's come to a point now where their hands are a little bit tied. They don't have the resources available to them in terms of what to do with animals who come into their control after the initial work has been done with the police department and the people who own those animals or have had those animals in their custody for one reason or another. And the main point that I'd like to make tonight is that I understand that the police department is asking the city to put together a budget. I even saw a note recently, $100,000 for next year to work on a facility. I don't know all the details about that facility. I know that the current facility that the city has consists of about three or four storm-fenced kennels that are really inappropriate, and I'm sure you guys have seen them in the parking lot of the public works facility. They just, they're a couple hours of temporary holding while an owner picks up a kid, you know, that kind of stuff, a fur kid. And, you know, they're not anything that should hold an animal for anything, maybe an overnight. I really don't even see those as an option for some of the 10-day quarantines that are necessary for bite situations and some of the other things that I've heard about from animal control. But I also want to tell you that I don't feel like the City of Renton should be getting in the business of running an animal shelter. And I made some phone calls to learn more about what things were happening on this particular topic. The phone calls that I made were to the police department, they were to the Seattle Humane Society, and they were also to the city attorney's office to find out why this relationship dwindled and why didn't we renew it, because as far as we knew, you know, it was going really well, and we were always really happy with the work that was done once the city's work was done, and then the Seattle Humane Society would take over from there. And the things that we learned, I was really happy to get phone calls back from the police commander. I'm going to say Commander K, because I always grew up his last name. Commander K called me back, and the Seattle Humane Society CEO, David Lowe, called me back. And I also received a telephone call from Zeneta Fontis from the city attorney's office. And what came out of those conversations was not a serious problem. It was, it was lots of different agendas. The nutshell of it is that the city attorney was using a boilerplate-type agreement that the city had put together to handle lots of different kinds of contractors. And one of the items in that contract that Seattle Humane Society felt uncomfortable with was the disclosure of documents and a nonprofit organization utilizing private people's information. They were naturally concerned about the nature of releasing private information about the whereabouts of where adopted animals had gone. That was probably the main state of the, oh, we can't come to the same place. So the other thing that happened was that when I talked to the police commander, that was the first I heard that, you know, they weren't really interested in renewing the relationship because the animal control and the police department were going to have this great new 4,800-square-foot facility designed to hold animals. And I think he was the first person that I spoke with, and when I heard about that, I thought, what are we getting ourselves into here? I could be wrong about details, and I will tell you that this is just what I heard from the people that I spoke with, and I'd like to do further research about it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your five minutes is up, but what I wanted to mention, I'm glad that everyone called you back, first of all.
Yes.
And it's a big deal. There is a lot of information that the council hasn't received yet in regards to the whole situation with the, with the relationship we used to have with Seattle Humane Society, and also the proposal on whether we house animals ourselves. All of that's going to be presented to them at 5:00 next Monday here in the council chambers, and at which time the council will have an opportunity to ask a lot of questions and figure out what our next steps are. But there's, it'll be a good opportunity for you to really get at least a baseline of information that's factual, and then there'll be discussion beyond there.
Yes, and the one thing I would like to leave the council with, if it's all right, if I-
Sure, absolutely.
Sure, in summary, is that based on these three conversations from these three people who really don't, they do know all the details, and they've, they've read it, and they're presenting their cases, the one thing that was very apparent to me is that we should be renewing the relationship with the Seattle Humane Society. And the reasons for that are a myriad of reasons, but the main one is cost. And the Seattle Humane Society can effectively, cost-effectively handle what we need as citizens of the city and our animals and strays, and the Seattle Humane Society is much better prepared to handle those cost-effectively than we are. And that's what I want to leave you with, and I'm excited to hear what they have to say next week, too, and I'll try my best to be here to get those details.
Okay, and certainly we'll, we'll answer any questions after that if by chance you're not able to attend the meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I understand there's a gentleman here also interested. You can come up to the microphone and give your name and city of residence for the record.
David Dixon. I'm working here. Basically, animal, animal control picked up our puppy, okay? He got lost, jumped out of our vehicle, and it kind of falls under, I had car troubles. We called in on the fourth day, first day, their thing is a 72-hour hold, and called. They verified with our, talking about the collar he had, that we were the owners of this dog. And at that point, we figured, come get your dog. Well, somewhere in between that, he went to a rescue. We've given, we've given nothing. A couple of days later, went to talk to an animal control. When this first happened, we spent two days on foot looking for our dog and posting where he was at. We didn't know about going to Facebook or to Renton, the police department to talk about it. And we saw the post, or she saw the post, it's basically her service dog unofficially. We were given, the animal control says the rescue remains, says they want to remain anonymous. And so we had no chance to approach these people. They had some concerns. He was chipped and neutered, good stuff. We were willing to pay for anything that had to be done. We planned on having this done here soon. We were going to get him certified as a service dog for her because she has really bad anxiety. We still have heard nothing about our dog. He's our dog, but he's somewhere with someone, but he needs to be home with us. And it falls into the same thing she was talking about. The animal control is doing the best it can, but there's a lot of ambiguity and stuff. Nobody's clear on what's going on. But if this was, from what I gather from the information, and I'm sorry I'm not prepared as I should be, that he would go to animal, he wouldn't be gone after three days. There would be no decision. He would go to Seattle Humane. They would work for weeks on end to try and find the owners of this animal, first and foremost. And, and the rescue, there's been comments made that because I didn't ship him and have him neutered, that I was unworthy of an animal, okay? I have something to say about that, but I won't right here. We are good, great owners. We were given to him by a man that gave us to him because we knew we'd take good care of him. He's with us 24/7. He jumped out of our vehicle because he saw another, he rides, rides in the window. We have a little harness. He rides in the window because he loves sticking his head, and he saw another dog at a stoplight over by Walmart, and he booked and saw us and was gone. And we chased him, long story short. We have no answers of where he is. He's our animal, and because of unclear policies, we just want to get our dog back. We want, we want somebody to say, stop the process of him being rehomed and tell, I mean, we should have a way to plead our case-
Sure.
-of why we're unworthy to have this dog. He's our, he's our son.
Have you, have you been in touch with our police department?
Yes, and I got a police report. I put it in there, but some of the details are, don't hit with posts that we have on Facebook that we've saved, on timelines and things like that. And I don't want to go into that right now, but- I mean, I, not him not, I was, the charges were that, yeah. The charges, the charges were that he wasn't on a leash and something else, but I could see he wasn't licensed. But because he got out of our vehicle, I have no control over what happens to him. There's not a law says he has to be on leash in my car. So I don't know why I was, the charge is a leash law violation and something else. He wasn't on a leash because he didn't need to be on leash.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'd just like to understand, first of all, I'm very sorry. I mean, it's devastating, I know, to lose a pet. Dude, I'm, I am trying to understand, though, is it, so did our police pick up the dog?
Animal control did over on Second Main at that construction site, that new construction site, on like the third. He'd been gone for three days or something, two days, two days maybe.
And then you're saying that the-
On 13.
The dog was then placed somewhere, and you feel like nobody has any record, or they're not telling?
We, they posted on Facebook that they found him, and I guess he may have been available in there a couple of days. This is a police report. On 7/13/16, approximately 1,600 hours, I was driving south on the 200 block of Main Street when I was flagged down by a construction worker on the corner of South Main. I was notified that a small white dog had been living in the ground floor parking garage for two days and displays aggressions when approached upon. Well, he's kind of scared. The worker requested I remove the dog from the construction site. It says, "I located a small cream-colored dog, secured him in a cash pole. The dog was placed in the rear of the cab, controlled truck, and did not display aggression when secured. The dog was hand-knitted collar with two bone-colored beads and no identification. It says, 'I transported the dog to city kennels for safekeeping.'" On 7/14, a photo of the dog was posted on Renton Facebook to attempt to locate the owner. No owner was located, and the dog was turned over to a rescue group. We called them on the 14th. Well, okay, so on the 14th, there was three days went by, okay? So it was the three, the fourth day. So the fourth day, the beginning of the fourth day at 7, so we're still within the 72 hours, a little over. No owner was located, and the dog was turned over. So at that point, he was turned over there. But we, when I called them and identified him, they said, this is your dog. So I don't know why, at that point, if they found the owners, even if his place was the rescue, that they wouldn't call the rescue and say, we found the owners. And it says on 70, at approximately, blah, 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 I was dispatched to contact David Dixon. And it says that we had posted it on Facebook. We believe it's dog. Mr. Dixon described the collar, referenced the problem made, and we believe that he was the owner of the stray that left our custody the previous day. And I informed Mr. Dixon that I would contact the rescue group to see if they would adopt the dog back to date, Mr. Dixon. Why would they adopt? He's my dog. Mr. Dixon said that his buddy of mine, a good friend, Caesar, was aware of it and the situation. He's been kind of doing, because I'm not really articulated, about the situation. And continuing, on 7/18, I spoke to a representative with the rescue group and informed them that the situation there was a request for one day to make a decision. The following evening, I spoke to the rescue representative again and learned that the decision was made to adopt, not adopt the dog, Tiny, back to Mr. Dixon. The decision was made due to the fact that Tiny was not neutered, not a law, had no chip, not a law, had or identification, which isn't something they can cite you for, and the owners did not, and did not locate the dog for a week after going astray. Because we didn't look, did not locate the dog, well, what if we looked for a week? I mean, it's irrelevant.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, if you could give contact information to one of our staff members here, and we'll, we'll have a discussion with the police and try to figure out exactly what took place here on this case.
I mean, I'm looking for all the owners of this, whatever. It's our kid. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. If the ball got dropped by somebody, if there's, all I want, I want my puppy back, and that's all I want. It's been the hell on us.
And let me just say that, so first of all, I mean, there's, there's two things going on here. I mean, the most important one is for you to find your dog and be reunited. But the other thing I want to say is I appreciate your coming down and telling your story because the, the issues that you're raising are somewhat related to our relationship with some of these private rescue groups. And because they're, you know, we, we have city laws and we have expectations, and we're trying to, we're trying to have a standard, you know, holding time and a holding place and, and standard regulations. And, and I could see if, if we're using different rescue groups, they might say, well, we're going to- going to make the decision about-
That's why this lady played like she was God, to tell me I was unfit because she thinks these things.
Yeah, and so I'll say that that, that is probably relevant to our discussion next week. I've, I've been briefed by the mayor about what, what the issues were, so addressing the earlier comments we heard. We've been really happy with the Seattle Humane Society, and, and we're not, we're not out to try and sever that relationship. It does seem like it might be that that relationship is ending for, for mutual reasons. But we are going to have a discussion where the council is going to get all the details at, at 5:00 next week. Your story is relevant, but I hope you're reunited with your dog-
But I don't know what it's going to take to be able to stop the rehoming, I, I don't know what it's going to take to stop this, because if something was done that wasn't right, that, something needs to be done to stop his rehoming, because if it keeps going on, and I don't know, you guys don't necessarily have it, but I don't know the right people to call or-
Also, I'd like you to give your information to our staff-
Animal Control knows exactly where he's at.
Okay.
I mean, I would just say, as not, not an attorney, as a-
And we have, we actually have somebody working on the case right now for us, so-
Okay, because I, I was going to say, I mean, the, the dog is your property, and, and then, you know, to, to have your property forcibly taken away, people have to follow the law.
Technically, it's property, but then it actually falls again.
So, you know, beyond that, I'll, I'll, I'll let people that know more about it than I do, but-
I appreciate that you, you understand my pain and that if this does something, I mean, that's the day he was found, he's scared to death. And we have, I mean, that's, that's him, he loves, that's with her. That's where he should be right now.
Yeah.
I appreciate your time and letting me in.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Nancy Monahan, and I am a resident of the North Renton neighborhood. What I'm here to speak to tonight is generally about my feelings of a few subjects, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. The first one is about the fireworks, slant gunshots that have been going off in our neighborhood over the past few weeks. I know this sounds like I'm going to be beating a dead horse about the fireworks, but even in the Renton Reporter, we had someone write a letter to the editor about this, and I'll read this briefly. It says, "City must enforce the fireworks ban. What good is it to have fireworks to be illegal in the city of Renton when the police seem to do nothing? I felt like I was in a war zone on July 4th. My animals were terrified. We need more enforcement of this law. People will only stop breaking this law if they are given a penalty for their illegal activities. The veterans and animals in our community have suffered enough. Please enforce this law, or we wasted our time voting it in." And that was just the week after the Fourth of July. And then there are also, as our president Neil Sneezeley had indicated, that there was also a article in the Renton Reporter, and this was on August 5th, and this was about the, when the fire chief was here last time to speak to what was going on at that time about the fireworks situation. One of the things that wasn't mentioned in the article is the fact that people were placed on hold. And when I came last month, and I don't know if you recall when, with me being here, I did read about some of these things on Next Door where people had complained about the, being placed on hold for 10 minutes or longer. And so the calls were not being immediately answered. So I, so I think there was more than 75 calls, but they just, not all of them had gotten through. So I will also just reiterate that, you know, Neil has mentioned that we will do a town hall, so maybe we can talk more about that there. The next subject that I'm talking, would like to speak to is crime events in our neighborhood. We've had some cars broken into, we've had the drug deals happening, which were also mentioned on the August 1st council meeting last week, where our neighbors are basically being threatened. We can't even live in our own neighborhoods without going outside and someone doing something illegal. And there are fights that take place day and night. So I'm not sure of how that should be addressed, but I do know that when people call the police department, that, I'm not sure of how many officers we have on shift at night or, you know, at certain time periods during the day. Would certainly like to know, you know, how that's being responded to. I do know that I, and I understand that there are priorities that have to be looked at, but just if we could get some kind of information as to, do we need to put more police officers on duty? That, that particular type of thing. And the last thing I'd like to speak to is the traffic issues that we have, especially going up and down my street, which is Meadow. And I have, for the past, I would say, two or three weeks, have been going out and getting photos for traffic that go up and down our street during the day and in the afternoons as well. And I have photographed in the morning, in the AM hours, about 40 cars in a 40-minute time span that had happened on one morning. And so I'm not sure of what's going to happen once we start getting Sartori School built, because I do know those traffic patterns will end up changing as well, especially with the demolition coming. And we in our neighborhood association are already going to have to deal with, you know, working with the Renton School District and making sure that, you know, they understand the problems that are being created with the buses that will not go down Factory, but they'll cut down Meadow to go back to the bus corral that's on Fourth and Garden down there. So I certainly appreciate your time, and hopefully we'll be able to get some of these issues resolved in a short while.
Thank you, and we'll be in touch for sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have four items for council consideration. Are there any items the council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, I know Mr. Person's got some stuff.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, Finance Committee, committee reports. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on August 8, 2016. Claims vouchers 348-490 through 348-509, and 348-511 through 348-889, and 348-923 through 349-247, 505 through 5031, 5038, and it looks like I-1816657. Also, seven wire transfers and two payroll runs with benefit withholding payments totaling $15,289,599.22, and payroll vouchers including 1,574 direct deposits and 175 payroll checks totaling $3,074,598.90. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next Finance Committee report is regarding the roof restoration here at City Hall. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the job order contract work order with form of construction in the amount of $208,135.05 to perform a complete roof restoration at City Hall. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract, signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, this should take care of the leaks that are coming in on the seventh floor.
We sure hope so.
I sure hope so. And I'd like to compliment staff on it. They were able to get, come up with a solution that'll last 15 years if we fix it now, instead of waiting and spending $500,000, so quite a savings. With that, I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next Finance Committee report is regarding a fee waiver for the 2016 Cast for Kids. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the requested $500 fee waiver for the boat launch and picnic shelter fees at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park on September 10, 2016, during the 2016 Special Population Children's Fishing Event sponsored by the Cast for Kids Foundation. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The final Finance Committee is regarding an amendment to the Fresh Bucks Implementation Contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve agreement number OSE 1615, 2015 through 2018 Fresh Bucks Implementation Interlocal Agreement with the City of Seattle, and authorize the Community Services Administrator to execute this agreement and the subsequent two annual addenda for 2017 and 2018, signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This doesn't really explain, explain everything that's happening with this, but the Fresh Bucks is a group that provides, actually like a prescription form, and they take it down to the farmer's market so people can buy good, fresh, healthy food. And then the mark, we give the money to that recipient off that prescription, and then we get reimbursed the money through this grant. So it's just a really unique way to get fresh food, good, healthy food to people that need it. With that, I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Public Safety Committee has one committee report.
Okay, Public Safety Committee, committee report, the cost reimbursement agreement, sex offender address verification. Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the cost reimbursement agreement to help approve public safety by establishing a greater presence and emphasis by the Renton Police Department in King County neighborhoods. This will be done by verifying the address and residency of registered sex and kidnapping offenders. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, moving on to legislation, we have one resolution and two ordinances for second and final reading.
The resolution is regarding a termination notice with Fire Protection District 25. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing termination of an interlocal agreement with King County Fire Protection District Number 25 entitled Fire and Emergency, excuse me, Fire and Emergency Services Operating Agreement, and further authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into the mutual notice of termination agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Corman, the council adopt this resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The first ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the Sunset Area Plan to Action Ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending ordinance numbers 5610 and 5740, adding five parcels and redistributing but not increasing the total number of housing units in the Sunset Terrace Redevelopment area, and revising a plan to action designated for the Sunset area pursuant to the State Environmental Policy Act.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of the ordinance as read.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by everybody else, but I'll say Mr. Pavoni to approve this ordinance as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it.
The final ordinance is regarding a franchise with T-Mobile West. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, granting onto T-Mobile West LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, authorized to do business within the state of Washington. Its affiliates assesses and assigns the right privilege, authority, and master permit to install communication facilities under, along, over, below, and through and across the streets, avenues, and alleys of the city of Renton within the public right-of-way of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it. Thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one announcement tonight. It's a committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August 15th, one we discussed already today. In fact, it'll be 5:00 PM here in the council chambers, four items on that agenda. The first is a master plan review follow-up. Second item is regional issues. Third item is downtown revitalization, economic development update. And the fourth item is the one we discussed already, the animal control services. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, August 11th, 3:00 PM in the council conference room, Plan Development Committee will be discussing six items. Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board appointments, Colpitt Sunset Terrace Redevelopment Fee Waiver Request, Unit Lot Subdivision Code revisions, Marijuana Regulations, Impact Fees Briefing, and Emerging Issues. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to be busy.
I know.
Mr. Person?
The Finance Committee's taking a week off.
Well-deserved week off, huh? Okay, Ms. Witchy?
All new business.
Yes, I have two items, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday, August 11th, at 4:30 PM, the Community Services Committee will meet in the council conference room, and we will be discussing the Renton Airport Advisory Committee appointments. And then on Monday, August 15th, at 4:00 PM, the Transportation Committee will meet in the council conference room to discuss emerging issues in transportation.